Good evening, welcome. Thank you for joining us this Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, November 9th. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Roll call, please.
Mr. Misskman?
Here.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mayor Abu-Wasili?
Here.
Mr. Brandt? Ms. Menser?
Here.
Mr. Sterned?
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a moment of silence. Hey, thank you. This time we have a public forum, which is a time set aside on the agenda for comments from members of the public on any topic listed on the agenda but not part of a public hearing. If anyone is here to address council on an item that is not on the agenda, there'll be a time at the end of the meeting for that. So if anyone's here to address the council on a topic that is listed on the agenda but not part of a public hearing, please come forward. You hand that to the clerk and then state your name and address. And speaking of the microphone, thank you.
My name is Mark Weiser. I reside at 847th Avenue here in Marion. And I represent DKW Art Gallery, also at that same location. My wife, Deb Weiser, is the owner of DKW Art Gallery. She has given me permission to say that I manage the art gallery. We just recently celebrated seven-year anniversary of the art gallery. We have owned two art galleries in Florida. And when we moved up here, talked with the Chamber, we were thrilled that the Marion was headed in the direction of becoming an art-based gallery. And we met with the other galleries in the area. I had prepared fourteen pages for today, but I see I have to keep it to five minutes. So I am here about the ordinance number 23-26 about the moratorium. And we are concerned about the moratorium. I met with a variety of city people. I appreciate their time and their energy in trying to explain to me why English is not English. When they mentioned that the moratorium covers artists and their living and selling, we live in our residence and sell from our residence. But here's what I want to point out. In my experience, we are a small business. And if you take a look at Uptown Marion, it has retail in the area. It's basically little people running the stores, no corporate chains, no conglomerates, hardly even a franchise. It's little people, little money. And if you take a look at what's going to happen out at Tower Terrace, that development out there is going to be big money. Grocery store chains, gas station chains. Everything out there is going to be a lot of large money. I think when you're putting in forward a moratorium that covers two totally different types of growth structures, population densities, and business styles, you're trying to put a blanket over two different problems. And to put a moratorium over an uptown business area that has been struggling for a number of years, thanks to derecho, COVID, and the general business economy, is putting undue pressure on small businesses that is going to hurt uptown even more than it is right now. And I can tell you as a small business owner that we have been doing this for over twenty-five years, as I had mentioned, that when you have something like this, I know there's going to be exceptions to the rule that you're going to further hurt the uptown area. I know there's going to be exceptions to the rule that you can apply, but if a business wants to move into Marion and they have to apply for an exception, which hasn't even been decided how that's going to be done, you're going to further hurt the uptown area. Right now, you have three art galleries in Marion. Barb's, Campbell Steel, and ourselves. Those three galleries are approaching the end of our life. Barb is ninety-one. Campbell Steel has been here, what, forty years? We've been here seven. There's no new galleries coming in, not a one. There's not going to be one if you pass that moratorium coming in. So take a look at the future of Uptown Marion and what you want to do to it. Please rethink about either dropping entirely, covering the uptown area, change your wording, or somehow rewording your moratorium if you want to save the uptown area for retail and growth. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weiser. Is there anyone else to address council? I believe you've had some comments outside the meeting.
Yes, we received three comments in advance of the meeting from Aaron Murren, Kevin Lewenhagen, and Shannon Schroeder, all on Barrington Parkway. They wrote in support of the moratorium ordinance.
Anyone else to address council? Okay, seeing no one's coming forward, we'll close this part of the meeting and proceed to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A1 through F3 includes resolutions 31653 through 31671.
Second. It has been moved by Councilmember Misskman and seconded by Councilmember Jensen to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through F3, resolutions 31653 through 31671. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. For the next section, I will turn over the meeting to the mayor pro tem.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu-Wasili's abstention. This will include items E1 through E2, resolution numbers 31672 to 31673.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with the mayor's abstention. This includes items E1 through E2, resolutions 31672 through 31673. Any discussion or question? Okay, very good. All those in favor of the consent agenda, approving the consent agenda with the mayor's abstention as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with one abstention. Okay.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve resolution number 31674, approving a form form-through-the-fence agreement related to access to the Marion Airport.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 31674, approving a form-through-the-fence agreement relating to access to the Marion Airport. Questions or discussion? I have one question. And I think, Kara, this might be best answered by you, or Ryan perhaps, either or. In light of the fact that we're still assessing our next steps regarding the airport, does approval of this form-through-the-fence agreement have any bearing or influence on the ultimate decision that we make? I guess in short, does this limit our decision-making?
Thank you, Your Honor. It does not. We have had that conversation with Luxair and with their attorney. We've also included language in the form-through-the-fence agreement that states that should the Marion Airport no longer cease to operate, or should the runway no longer be in use, then the agreements will terminate. Until we have something more concrete, we needed to make sure that we had that in there because council is still in the process of making that decision. I would also just point out, since this was not on our agenda on Tuesday, that this is a form agreement. So what we're asking you to approve here is the form that will be brought back and it will be reviewed and approved by staff for future iterations, so long as there's no change to the material terms.
Okay, all right, good. Thanks. Any other questions?
Okay. Just noting that I won't be voting on this.
Thank you. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 31674, approving a form-through-the-fence agreement relating to access to the Marion Airport. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with one abstention. Back to the mayor.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 23-28, amending various sections of the Marion Code of Ordinances, including Section 24-3 regarding the Building Inspection Division, Section 223-11 regarding nuisance abatement, and Section 313-12.7 regarding automated traffic enforcement. Initial consideration.
Second. It was in seconded to approve the initial consideration of ordinance number 23-28, amending various sections of the Marion Code of Ordinances, including Section 24-3 regarding Building Inspection Division, Section 223-11 regarding nuisance abatement, and Section 313-12.7 regarding automatic traffic enforcement. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the initial consideration of ordinance number 23-28, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Next item is a public comment section regarding a request for a rectangular rapid flashing beacon at the intersection of Winchester Drive and 29th Avenue. We have the city engineer with the presentation.
Yes, Your Honor. So in the council packet, we have the actual petition that we received, the tac memo that goes through a lot of details. We did pedestrian counts out there on August 1st of '23. There are a total of forty-four pedestrians at that intersection. And then with the proximity of the mini roundabout to the west and that a rapid flashing beacon needs to be made at a mid-block and not at the actual intersection. If they did not feel safe using the Winchester and 29th Avenue intersection, it's recommended that they go use the roundabout that's just down the block. It's just off the picture here. It's, if you use the MUTCD walking speed, it's six minutes longer than if they were to take Butterfield Park and use the side path. We did send it out to then all the petitioners, and I have not received any comments. I don't know if the city clerk has.
Is there anyone here to address council? On this measure, please come forward. Okay, we'll close the public comment section and then we'll move on to the motions. And there may be questions for you, for the city engineers, so stick around. Okay?
Mayor, I move to receive and file the Traffic Advisory Committee report regarding a request for the rectangular rapid flashing beacon at the intersection of Winchester Drive and 29th Avenue.
It has been moved and seconded to receive and file the Traffic Advisory Committee report regarding the request for a rectangular rapid flashing beacon at the intersection of Winchester Drive and 29th Avenue. Discussion on the motion to receive and file the report? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to receive and file the report, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion directing staff to proceed with the recommendations from the Traffic Advisory Committee report regarding a request for a rectangular rapid flashing beacon at the intersection of Winchester Drive and 29th Avenue.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to direct staff to proceed with the recommendations from the Traffic Advisory Committee report regarding the request for a rectangular rapid flashing beacon at intersection of Winchester Drive and 29th Avenue. Now, discussions, questions for Mike? Okay, all those in favor of approving the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. Mr. Harper?
Yeah. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Your Honor, I move to approve ordinance number 23-26, approving a moratorium related to commercial uses along portions of Tower Terrace Road, Highway 13, and the Central Corridor zoning districts. This is our final consideration.
Second. It was in seconded to approve ordinance number, the final consideration of ordinance number 23-26, approving the moratorium related to select commercial uses along portions of Tower Terrace Road, Highway 13, and the Central Corridor zoning district. Discussion? I would like to start just by making sure that something, that it's clarified. I think there's been a little bit of misunderstanding about what the moratorium means. It's been being treated, I think, or maybe misperceived as a permanent decision on certain types of businesses and where they can go. The moratorium is simply a halt on new projects during a limited period of time. It's not changing anything in the laws, in our ordinances. It's not changing anything. It's just allowing us to consider specific uses and if any types of, or if any adjustments need to be made to the zoning code or the application of the zoning code when it comes to certain uses in particular areas. But the end result may be that nothing changes. So there's no permanent change from the moratorium. It is just a pause to allow us to look at our comprehensive plan, update that, and then see if any adjustments need to be made in the zoning code. It and when it comes to the classification of the live workspaces, it is stated as artists' live workspaces because that's how it is worded in the code. And so for legal reasons, as I understand it, and the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, it had to be stated that way. But the intention is to look at all all places where a business and a residence are combined on the main floor, the first floor of a building, and to see if any adjustments or regulations need to be made in how those uses are handled. Our job is to make sure that things are done correctly, that we don't cause an unintended negative impact through our zoning code. And it's not, this is not a permanent change. Again, there may be no changes at all when this is all done. But it's a temporary halt so that we can look at it. We want development to happen. We want businesses to be here. We have, I think the city has shown over and over and over again, we support the arts, we support business, we support small business. We've invested a lot in creating the environment, especially in the uptown, for small businesses to thrive. And I think they are thriving. We've come a long ways in the last few years. So it's a little inaccurate to say that, you know, we're damaging business. But we want things to be done in an orderly way and in a way that everyone gets to thrive. And we want to be able to look at that. And it's very limited uses for a very limited time. It's not a moratorium on all development or all commercial projects. I just want to make sure that that's clear to everyone. We want, we want development to happen in a way that makes sense and that adds value. And that's not saying that any particular business doesn't add value, but it's, we want to make sure that business, certain uses are in the right place and done in the proper way. So any other comments or questions or discussion?
Yeah, my comment is, again, we are doing this, and it seems like everything we're doing is for the short term. It's exactly the opposite. Everything we're doing here is for the long term. So we're taking that pause so that the manner in how things may change for the future, where everybody here can look back in another ten or twenty years and say, we did it the right way. I was on P&amp;Z for a number of years, and you are doing, when you work on P&amp;Z, you're doing that in a manner of a long-term vision. The things that you're deciding will impact this community for a very long term. And so when I was on P&amp;Z, and the ten years I was on, there was only one item I can look back on and say, boy, I wish we had done that differently. So I want to look back in another twenty, ten or twenty years and not have even one item that we're concerned about, that we're doing it the right way today.
And I would just add also that, you know, since there are three different areas that are impacted by this, and it could be different considerations for each area, because each area does have its own unique attributes and characteristics. And so it's not a blanket. Any change wouldn't be a blanket change for all the areas or the entire city. Every area may have different considerations and end up with different types of regulations or restrictions. So what, if a use is permitted in one area, it may not be permitted in another area. So go ahead.
Based on what you already talked about, Mayor, we already know one item that definitely needs to get changed, and that is the wording of artists' live work.
Yes.
Okay, so we automatically know that needs to be redefined, reworded, and maybe there's a couple of different categories that come out of that. But we automatically know that verbiage is going to get changed. So there may be other changes. That's one that will absolutely get changed.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I don't know if this is the time, or if Dave wanted to talk a little bit, when we talked about processes a little bit on Tuesday, of what happens with things that we need to change, and that that, that we're hearing these different comments, and there's some things that would be adjusted, however, some of that would happen. My understanding from our conversation Tuesday would be we would come back after this and amend this with these needed changes and discussions that have occurred. Is that accurate? Just to regroup for people who did not, were not part of Tuesday's discussion on this topic.
Yeah, that is, that is, that is correct. Do you mean elaborate a little bit more on that, or I'm sorry?
She was looking at me because I was holding the microphone. Yeah, I mean, internally, we're going to map out the process and the timing of that process. But we know that that is something that we staff have to do in order to, I mean, we're taking it as direction from council that those are the next steps that we will do. So we're going to come back, we're going to huddle as a team and map, make sure we map it out. We certainly don't want to rush it through. We want to make sure that we're taking our time and making, getting it right. But we do, we do know the direction that we need to head.
Go ahead.
Well, returning back to the, the concept of the artist's live work provision. And so the learning that I've gained this week is that's very specifically called out in state code. So the thing that I am focused on is, given the concern that has been elevated about that, perhaps that is the very first amendment that we bring back to the full council, because it's been fairly well illuminated that there's, there's concern around that. And so we need to perhaps have some clarity as, you know, what, what happens in the immediate term. So I'm interested in is if that is an appropriate amendment that we need to make coming out of the gate with this and, you know, next month or whatever the right timeframe is. And I'll be interested that that is put into the, into the cycle of activity that Dave, you all are going to define how we work through that.
Yeah, I believe there's some, I'm going to call it low-hanging fruit, the ones that, I mean, obviously, there's some bigger items that are obviously going to be affected by the comprehensive plan. There are other items that might not be as much. We'll look at those, identify those, bring back a tentative schedule. And for the council to decide, hey, we want to make this priority number one, two, three. These, we might want to wait for the comp plan, and then we'll put a schedule forward. We'll be bringing back recommendations and then hopefully get some direction from you folks to go to planning zoning commission and bring it back.
And if I can jump on, we've already had the conversation with RDG, which is the consultant that's coming on, on board to help us with the comp plan process. So we've, during the kickoff meeting, we've already shared that the moratorium was a big thing. We want to focus in on that first. So that is part of that, as Dave and the staff are leading this charge, mapping it out, we are making sure that we're communicating with RDG to make sure that we're not duplicating efforts or bumping up against those efforts and making sure that we're as efficient as possible.
Other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approve, oh, I'm sorry.
Did Dave have some other comments?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. No, the mayor captured everything I was going to talk about ours live work, so I'm done.
I just wanted to make sure.
No, I'm, I'm done.
Yeah, and I Sorry, Mayor.
No, it's okay. And I would just add, these decisions are taken lightly and we, I think, you know, I'm proud that we have a very thoughtful council that really does their homework and really thinks, thinks about decisions and the reasoning and their well-reasoned decisions. And there's never an intent to, we're trying to improve the city, we're trying to create a great environment for everyone. There's never intention to hurt any business. We've made lots of investments to encourage business and to support business. And, you know, again, just the bottom line in this is it's, there's no permanent change being taken by this decision tonight. It's to allow a review so that we could see if any adjustments need to be made somewhere so that things work properly and that we're not creating negative situations through our zoning code. Okay. With that, we'll take the vote. All those in favor of approving the final consideration of ordinance number 23-26, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 23-27, approving a request to rezone property from AG Agricultural Holding to PUD Planned Unit Development for property located south of Farnow Road and east of Bluegrass Street, Marion, Iowa. Rookwood Estates LLC, final consideration.
Second. Moved in second to approve the final consideration of ordinance number 23-27, approving the request to rezon property from agricultural holding to planned unit development for the property located south of Farnow Road and east of Bluegrass Street. Discussion? All those in favor of ordinance number 23- All those in favor of ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty-seven, please say aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution. Number three-one-six-seven-five, approving Rookwood Estates East Preliminary Site Development Plan. Permit the development of a mixed residential and commercial development for property located south of Farnow Road and east of Bluegrass Street. Marion, Iowa, Rookwood Estates LLC.
Been moved in seconded to approve resolution number three-one-six-seven-five. Approving the preliminary site development plan for Rookwood Estates. Uh, and permitting the development of a mixed residential and commercial development. Discussion. All those in favor of approving resolution number three-one-six-seven-five, please say aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three-one-six-seven-six, approving Rookwood Estates East Preliminary Platte for property located south of Farnow Road and east of Blue. Bluegrass Street, Marion, Iowa, this Rookwood Estates LLC.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded to approve resolution number three-one-six-seven-six. Proving Rookwood Estates East Preliminary Platte for property located south of Farnow Road and east of Bluegrass Street. Discussion. All those in favor of approving resolution number three-one-six-seven-six? Please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. This time we have another public forum, which is a time set aside for members. Uh, comments from members of the public on any item. If anyone here is is here to address counsel, please come forward. Come on forward. Welcome, say your name and address, please, and speak into the microphone. And did you fill out a card?
I did not, but I'll.
Okay, will you do that afterwards, please? Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name's Scott Fones. I live at twenty-two thirty-one Tamarack Circle. You know, as I look at the dais here tonight, you all look just a little more rested. Even as I look around the room, you all look a little more rested because we got an extra hour on Sunday. Well, that led to. Something that I kind of came across as I was doing some research for a book I'm working on right now. And if you look on the wall back there, you're gonna see a clock. And do you know? And I'm sure you do, that the numbers on that clock match the numbers on a clock. In a train station in Chicago. They also match the numbers in the city hall on a clock in Omaha. But you know, a hundred and forty years ago today. That wasn't the case. We didn't have time zones then. The way time worked at that point was set by the local community until the railroads came in. And for Marion, it was the Chicago-St. Paul Milwaukee Railroad. And what would happen then is communities that were served by that railroad. Their time was often set by wherever the headquarters was at that railroad. And in this case, it happened to be in Milwaukee. But if you were going to Chicago. Your time was different. And in fact, if you were in Des Moines. Depending on what you needed to do, you might have to carry five different watches in order to keep track of what the time was. Well, the American Railroad Association. Recognized that we've got a major problem with time and time is critical when it comes to railroads. Because there's one line that ran from through Marion. To Ox to um, Oxford Junction and to the Mississippi River. Well, trains ran both ways. And there were very specific orders that said at such and such a time. You had to be on this siding and you had to be on this siding for that amount of time. Trains that didn't follow those orders. Went head-on into each other, and that was something that was a frequent problem. Because we didn't have electronic switches and we didn't have signals like we have today. So the Railroad Association, recognizing that we've got an interconnected railroad system. With tens of thousands of miles of track. And a time environment in which there were at least fifty different standards. Decided that we need to come up with something different. So here in Marion, as part of the process, on November eighteenth, eighteen eighty-three, one hundred and forty years ago this month. Four time zones got established. And the way they did it was from um, a gentleman out of Canada, Sir Sanford Fleming. Who took the world and said, well, it's three hundred and sixty degrees, divided it by twenty-four. And said, okay, well. Every space is fifteen degrees of longitude. Because it takes an hour from the sun to move from the start of a time zone to the end of the time zone. That's how we ended up with time zones is because of the railroads. And I thought I would just, because I came across that, I thought it was kind of an interesting little tidbit, and I just thought I would pass it along tonight as. Maybe that little bit of that Mr. Draper moment in history. Thank you very much for your time. You all take care.
Thank you very much. Anyone else to address counsel, please come forward. Okay, we'll uh, move on to council comments. Gage?
Sure. It's the only thing I'll highlight is tomorrow, uh, we have the the Veterans Day breakfast out at uh, Hy-Vee. So there'll be a few of us there, I know, tomorrow morning. Um, so to all the veterans in our community, thank you for your service and I hope to see you tomorrow at the breakfast.
I just want to uh. I'd like to reflect Gage's comments about honoring the service of our veterans and their families. I'll be uh, speaking briefly at the um, Hallmark Campus. Um, the new Hallmark Campus and uh, C Avenue Extension. Um, and to um, honor the veterans that are in residence there. Um, just as a side note, following up on the time zone uh, presentation. I am checking the National Institute of Standards and Technology website, better known as time.gov. And Terrell, I would just uh, uh, comment, our clock is a little off according to that time standard up there, so. Can we please take care of that? Thank you.
Real quick, I'll just uh, congratulate Gage and Steve and Grant. And the mayor on uh, winning their reelection on Tuesday. Congratulations, all three and four of you. And then uh.
Same to you.
Thank you. And then thank you to all those in Ward Three that voted for me, because I also won reelection. So, that's all.
Okay. I've got a long list of things to uh, catch everyone up on, uh, since the last meeting. Um, since the last meeting, a lot happens between meetings. Um, we met with our state uh, delegation, our state representatives. Uh, we've had two ribbon cuttings. Uh, Dynasty's House, uh, uh, which is a small business, uh. At the, at the entrance of the of the uptown. Uh, and OTC, which is a company out of Ohio, out in the, in the Marion Enterprise Center. Uh, that will be serving their clients uh, in Iowa and Illinois out of this location, so that's a great addition to our. To our um, MEC out there. Um, I had the opportunity to read it in nine different classes for America Reads over a two-day period. Uh, we had the youth council, uh, second session of the year with the youth council, which went very well. Um, I had the pleasure of judging the spooky art contest at the DKW Gallery, which I've done for a number of years. It's always fun. Um, and we had the Supreme Court visit Marion. And hold oral oral arguments at Marion High School. That was a really great opportunity uh, to have them here and to. Um, have them learn a little bit about Marion. We had a reception and then um, the oral arguments were very well attended. Um, of course, we had the candidates forum. Um, I participated in the uh, International Day at the Montessori School of Marion. Um. And uh, also got to uh, listen to some presentations with the Venture Academics uh. Program at Linmar. Uh, their project was to come up with ideas on how to increase voter turnout, so. That was interesting to see, to hear their ideas and to share some uh, uh, feedback with them about their ideas. Um, I participated in the mayor's roundtable at the CRBT, which is an annual thing. Um, we got to tour the new public services facility, which was really great. Uh, I'm really proud uh, of what's going on out there and that. Uh, our public services team who works so hard uh, to help us serve the public in Marion. Uh, they're gonna get a wonderful facility to be able to do their job. Um. This morning, there was a a breakfast uh, to help people learn about Marion cares and the really critical role they serve in this community. So I was really happy to have attended that and just uh, learn more about um, all their initiatives. And how they fill so many needs that would go unmet, uh, if they weren't in in this, in this community. Um, over the past couple of days, we have uh, hosted uh, the. A team that is helping, uh, the the consultants from New York who are working on the growth initiative that our. Metro cities are working on together to uh, come up with a marketing plan to increase population in our area. Uh, so that our businesses have the talent they need. And just this afternoon, um. Uh, we honored, we helped honor Ben Davis of the Chocolate Shop. He received a uh, recognition. Uh, for his small business, uh, for, it's a veterans uh, award. Uh, and so that was really nice. We uh, got to honor him and then held several meetings with um. With potential developers who are very interested in Marion and Uptown in particular. And uh, it's just great to share the excitement and to see. Um, their surprise when they tour around Uptown and just hear about all the things that are happening here and. Um, and then see their excitement for the for the future of Marion and wanting to be part of it, so. Want to thank all the partners and team Marion. Uh, who uh, work together. Uh, on promoting Marion and making it a great place, and that includes everybody in this room. Our friends at the Chamber, Uptown and Metco. And of course, our business community, we all, I feel like we are all working together to move Marion forward. Uh, and everyone has great intentions and I, and that ultimately drives a lot of good things, so. That's it for me. We have a closed session this evening.
Mayor, I move to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section twenty-one point five-one C of the Code of Iowa.
Second.
Been moved in seconded to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section twenty-one point five-one C of the Code. Discussion. And uh, we have the attorney's statement, please.
Thank you, your honor. I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, section twenty-one point five-one C.
Okay, if there's no questions or discussion, can we do the roll call, please?
Mr. Meskman?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mayor Abou Osley?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Spencer?
Yes.
Thank you for joining us. We're now adjourned to closed session. See you next time.